I think, but Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, carries. Now, I'll call for a motion to enter into open session. All in favor? Aye, opposed? On the open session, uh, please stand for the pledge of.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice.
Hey, uh, well. We go with, uh, residents comments, we had, um, one sign up if you'd like to address the board. You could state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Dennis Hannan, uh, address is for OP Drive. I'm here to address, um, some concerns I think a lot of parents have regarding the lockdown incident that occurred Monday. Uh, first, I wanna state that I think, um, you know, the law enforcement, they did an excellent job, they did what they were trying to do. Uh, you know, every day, these men and women, they buy on a uniform and they go to work and they don't know if they're gonna make it home. Um, so I think they should be commended for that. I think where a lot of the concerns lie, uh, as I speak to other parents within this district, uh, is surrounding the communication. Uh, how this was handled. Okay. There wasn't a whole lot of communication about this, so I just wanna go through some of the chain of events. Uh, at seven fifty-five AM, the school, uh, was on lockdown. Parents were notified. At eight twenty-two AM, uh, parents were notified that the lockdown was lifted. However, there were reports from children that the, they remained in lockdown for over an hour after it was communicated to parents that the lockdown was lifted. Now. It was communicated later on that, uh, this was a malfunction in an alarm system. Okay? Now, I don't know what kind of malfunction warrants an armed response with guns drawn at students, but I think that the parents deserve a right to know. Okay, there hasn't been any communication about this. Have you communicated to any of the parents what this malfunction was? Did you remediate it? Right? The parents are the stakeholders, but really, you're subsidized by people that pay school taxes. People deserve to know. I believe that there should be transparency and openness in government, you're all public servants. My nephew was forced to, uh, huddle in an attic scared. These kids, these students were scared. One of them peed their pants and they were forced to wait in an attic or some kind of upper level of the building next to, uh, equipment or some kind of machinery. And it was hot. And they were told they couldn't use their phones and they all had to huddle together, they were actually threatened. If they used their phones, that they would be faced with in-school suspension. Now. I'm not a trained law enforcement officer, okay? But I have consulted with federal law enforcement, the FBI in Buffalo. Okay, I don't know what the protocols are for dangerous situation, maybe in particular an active shooter. But I don't really think it's beneficial that you have a whole bunch of students that are soft targets, all hung together in one area. Usually, it's run, hide, fight, right? Maybe not that order. Um, usually, that's how it goes. Okay, so these students, they were held together, they were scared. Has any counseling been offered to these students? None that I know of. They suffered an emotional, uh, and mentally traumatic experience. What have you done to address that? What have you done to address the concerns that these parents have and, and the emotional and psychological well-being of these students? Have you done anything? I think we know the answer to that. I think we all know the answer to that. Has any communication been sent out to these parents? No. So I think really, people deserve to know. More about the protocols that are in place, the failures in communication that happen and what you plan on doing to do better, cuz you can all do better. You can. And I know you all wanna pat yourselves on the back at the end of the day and say what a great job you did, but I'm here to tell you, you can do better. The parents deserve better, the students deserve better. That's it. So I yield my remaining time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consensus items, uh, consensus agenda items. So can I get a motion to approve them as presented?
Like a motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, was there any personnel items to separate today or no? No. Okay, uh, like to call for a motion to accept the personnel items as presented. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to standing committees, uh, any updates from the Capitol Projects Committee?
Yeah, we don't have.
Not tonight, not tonight. Um, there's a written communication, uh, to the board of fundraisers, um, no, actually needs to be done on that, right? And there's also, uh, report to the board from finance, um, regarding a tax refund. Um, Allison, uh, do you be able to address that?
Thanks.
There was, we had a refund issued to BWR Chemicals, uh, they petitioned four years of tax assessments and actually waived two years, so two years were issued in refunds. Um, and that's what that represents there, it was an Article seven refund based on a tax. Assessment reduction.
Okay, and does the school have any mechanism for appeals in that case?
Actually, it's gone, it had gone to our attorney, so when we see ones that are large like this, I send them to the attorney to review. And he actually was part of the reason why two of the years were waived, so normally, we would've had a refund four years, but two years got waived, so we refunded two years.
So that is a circumstance, okay.
I, I, and, um, I do have one other thing I wanna talk about too, um. I was notified today by Niagara County that the town of Wheatfield Assessor had made an error in, um, some of the, uh, two of the properties, um, that were, um, placed on the assessed values. So they were supposed to be, they were supposed to be registered as section eight and then, um, coded as non-taxable, but the code never got it. So they were included in the taxable assessed values. Um, they should not have been, um, therefore, they became part of our tax lobby. Um, so now, they're asking us to take those out, so basically, we're having to pull almost a hundred thousand dollars off of our levy because of an error at the town of Wheatfield, because the assessor made an error, so I am following up with our attorneys because I was very insistent on saying, we are not paid for this. This was not an error on her, it was an error on the assessor, she did not check things like she should've. Um, I talked to, I spoke to the county, um, they really don't review those things, they take the information from the towns. Um, and I don't know exactly how it was found, I think it was found because one of the companies actually, uh, is on a pilot agreement with us as well, so they were wondering why they got a tax bill along with a pilot bill. And they had paid their pilot. So. That one, one of them was for fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-four cents, and one was forty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixteen cents. So we're talking close to a hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna lose on our levy this year.
Hmm.
Because of an error they made, so I just wanna bring that to your attention, I am gonna, um, communicate this with our district school, school district attorneys and see where, what we, what action we could take.
Okay. Thank you, anybody else have any questions for Allison Adams? Uh, moving on to any items for a board discussion, any old business? A new business? I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, ex officio student members, sorry, Jonas.
There were a lot of, um, students who approached me and mentioned how they were. Some of them were scared, some of them were angry, there was just a lot of shit, a lot of turmoil about that. Um, a big one was late arrival with, um, some of the students not being notified when to come back in because if they're coming in second period, the lockdown and shelter facilities lifted out, I was very, or the something about my employees. Just just after second period, so they weren't, they weren't sure when to come to school, so most of them just didn't. Um, so whenever something like this were to happen in the future, just more communication to both the students and parents, obviously, the students who participate in late arrival and anybody who comes to school late, just so that they don't have to miss the day, they don't have to miss any classes or, yeah. Um, and then another thing was some students wanted some sort of like coordinated planning or training in that situation or further, like, I mean, we were taught to go and point to class and be quiet. And let the law enforcement handle things, but obviously, when the situation occurred, there was not much of that, there was a lot of messings, there were students in the halls, there were students wouldn't say they needed to know, some teachers weren't even in the region students, they were students alone, um. So there was a lot of concern about that as well. Finally, there was, um, a few raptor system malfunctions, uh, like I know some teachers who have the, uh, apps on their phone. Um, they get like a ping if that kind of thing happens. It's loud and it was happening in a delayed way, so that if this were a, a real situation rather than a function, it could be real dangerous if that was a delay and it weren't a ping when everyone was supposed to be quiet. Um, I don't know if that's anything that we are control of, but I just thought of it.
Oh.
Know that because that could be a little negative.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to President's Report, um, you know, obviously, the elephant in the room is the event that happened, um. I do wanna say, as was presented by, uh, residents comments, uh, kudos to all the first responders and police, and man, they were here and on the scene and, you know, ready to go, and, you know, fortunately, uh, it, it wasn't irrelevant, um, and we were able to, I guess, dry run, probably the best drill you could ever have. But yeah, it's unfortunate that it had to happen that way, and, uh, it's certainly, uh, uh, a, a place for learning, you know, learning what went well, what didn't go well. Um, and a lot of issues, um, I know the superintendent, uh, is going to address on, on what the takeaways from all this. So with that, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. Um. So, and, and just so the, uh, individuals will speak, just so that they know, I, I'm gonna just address this more generally, right? And then I'll follow up afterwards, okay, with you. Um, you're welcome. The, um. As far as communication is concerned, we sent out, um, five different communications between seven fifty-four and nine oh two, okay? Um, so everybody understands that the, the way that our communication system works, it's called Blackboard Connect. And there's three different ways to send messages in Blackboard Connect. One of them is through, um, a text, one of them is through email, and then one of them is through a voice, a voice phone call, and that can either be somebody putting their voice on it or it can be text to voice, either one. All of our families at, at high school, middle school, and actually throughout the district have the capability of receiving the voice message. They don't all have the ability to receive the text message or they don't all have emails. The issue with that is this, both the text and the email are immediate. So if we send, uh, the, the first message goes out at seven fifty-four and we send it as a text or we send it as a, it goes out right then. And that everybody gets that. Um, so the, the voice message, the way that it works is, and John, I'm glad, glad you brought this up. If your number was in there and yours wouldn't be, and this is interesting to me when you said the late arrivals, I wonder if their parents were getting the notices or if they were home alone and not getting them because parents maybe have it going to text, okay? Or to their cell phones, excuse me, not many people have landlines. When, if, if you, if it was on your phone and if your phone was one that could be called, if, if your phone doesn't go to voice message, it will skip by you. The robocall system will skip by you and it will go to the next person. And it goes all the way down the line, and if another person doesn't, it'll skip them, and then it cycles back, and it'll actually do that three times until it stops, okay? So unfortunately, like when we send out our regular voice communications, you know, even, people will get them at, at different times. So on that day, again, within, um, what or not, it would be an hour and eight minutes, we sent out five different communications. People were getting those at all different times. And, and what might have happened, and we heard some people talking about this, um. Someone could've got a second or third message, text a friend and say to the friend, did you get this? I didn't get anything yet, did you look at your phone, did you pick it up? Oh. And it may show, cuz it won't show on their phone until it actually goes through, if they look back and saw when like the initial calls were made, it would've been a lot earlier in that sequence. We were asking our, the Blackboard Connect message system to overlap on itself. So the first call was at seven fifty-four, the next one was at, uh, maybe ten after eight, somewhere around there, eight oh nine, so. So they started layering on one another. And I can only imagine that, that same system is then struggling and people are getting the different messages at different times, but in the end, everybody should've had them same time, but it does take, it can take like forty minutes, I think one of them, if I remember looking at, it's cuz we did, of course, do it kind of after action to print this out. It was like sometimes forty minutes before it was complete, so what it shows us is when it was started, when it was initiated, and when it's completed. So if that makes sense to you. So that's how we did, that's how we handled our, our, our communication, um, that day. Um, it started, the event started at seven thirty-eight, okay? And as far as communication, I, I don't know if everybody looked at this or saw it or got it, but all of our high school and middle school parents were sent a video by me yes, last night, and everybody should've received that, okay? Um, and that video message talked about, um, the time that it was initiated, the time that it went down, out to nine one one. So just to give everybody a little bit of kind of background, um, of what we've, what we have in place here in the district. Um, we actually have three different ways to initiate a lockdown. And whenever I say initiate a lockdown, I mean, everything happens, okay? I mean, it's not just somebody going onto a phone and yelling lockdown. We have three different ways to initiate a lockdown. Um. The third way is the way that we're, it's kind of in development, okay, the third way? And that was the, a sequence that was initiated and wi- with, without intent at all, and that's what happened, but here's the thing. When I say initiate a lockdown, the second that it happens in any three of those ways, all the blue lights on our outside buildings start blinking, okay? A PA announcement goes over saying that we're in lockdown. A phone call goes out to nine one one saying the place is in lockdown. Our SROs, our school resource officers, our school security officers, our administrators, they all get a notification on the phone saying that we're in lockdown. Okay? Um, lockdown is the only thing that operates like that. So. When we got that, so that happens at seven thirty-eight, within a minute, a call went to our nine one one dispatch. We double-checked that afterwards, said, when did you get the call, how fast was it? Okay, so, I mean, you know, seven thirty-eight is when it's, it's initiated sometime in the minute of seven thirty-nine. I don't know if it's thirty seconds, forty-five seconds, you know how the minutes work. So they got a call. Um, once they did, we're, we're in lockdown. Now, we were, once we were able to, um, determine that this was an error, that, that message was sent out to families. Uh, yet, of course, that some families got that a lot later than others, but all of our families got that information as soon as we did. So I know that most people wouldn't know how this works, but what, what happens is this. And we train, thank goodness, with our law enforcement right beside us all the time. We have something called an incident command system. That incident can, the command system is made up of the leaders of all of the different responding agencies, okay? And they meet with me and we coordinate everything from there. So once we were confident, and, and the end is my call, okay? To put something out saying that we were in a position that we were, we, we could, we're pretty confident that this was a malfunction, and at that point, understand, we really didn't know which malfunction, which of those systems, but we were sure. Listen, thank goodness, there was no active shooter, there was nothing like that happening, right? Nothing. Once we were able to make that determination and we felt confident, we then and I said, let's send the message to families. So that's when that went out. At that point, and, and, and this is, you know, one, one of the things that I've seen and heard, and I think I heard here tonight. Once we know that, law enforcement still has a response that they have to do, so we were able to, in essence, say, we're no longer in, in lockdown, they still have to go in and check every single room. That's their protocol.
They're.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry.
No, you're okay.
They, they were, they were in the building, all this was all transparent, like, everybody in the county is coming in because they were leaving, providing everybody the ability to get into our school. So when that came out, I'm already in the building and I'm hearing teams coming in that are just, they're just coming in so keep jammed to the lungs, then completely separate area, and they're just coming into school. Now we're just making sure everything is safe because we first, that it was an error, which in the system, we're taking care of it. Like that is our ultimate, we're, we're making sure before it's not, you know what I mean?
They're, no, they're, they're, they're training, and you know, we talk about this, we have a district leadership team, right? We talk, their, their training is not to stop. They have to go through and go through their protocols. Um. And, and let, let me back up, so when we go back to that seven thirty-eight time, I, I get that on my phone, I'm at district office, I run, jump in my truck and come over. Um, our administrators who, um, could have, and by the protocols, all been in lockdown somewhere, weren't. I went into the middle school and administrators there with the SRO and SSOs, and they're checking the place for your kids. When I got there, I don't know how long it took me to drive over, please don't check some camera, okay? But however long it took me to get over there, I got over there and if it was two minutes later, okay? That might be a lot, um, I could hear a pin drop in the, in the middle school. Like, the only people that were moving around, everybody was already into a lockdown position. And it was, that, that part was incredible to me, as a matter of fact, I, I gotta tell you, it was seven thirty-eight. The, one of the worst times of the day for us to have something like this happen. Because it was mentioned by Jonah, so kids are, kids are walking to classes, classes haven't started yet. They're still coming in, if there's a late bus, they might still be coming off the late bus. If they're getting dropped off, they might still be getting dropped off, so they're, they're walking to their classes, teacher might have their, their, their door propped open, that, right, because classes hadn't started, homeroom hadn't started, they're going down making some copies. But our, to, to, to a point that you made, I guess what I was really impressed with and what I heard, right? And I saw in the one school that already happened when I got there first, was that everybody was behind locked doors. So, uh, part of the training with our, all of our staff is that for, so, somebody mentioned, it's hide, run, fight. Almost always in that order, not necessarily always, okay? But, but that, that's the order that we teach it, right? So getting behind a closed door and getting to a safe spot is exactly what needs to happen. So that happens in our buildings, our SROs and SSOs are already walking through the buildings. They're check, without anybody else with them, they're trained to go to where the, 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 the noise is, there wasn't any, they're still walking through small numbers at that time, checking our buildings. So they go through, everything's locked, everybody looks like they're, they're, they're in a safe place. Then the rest of the law enforcement show up, and as they start showing up, they get into their teams and they move through our building. And the first thing that they're doing is checking, making sure, they're checking every hallway, they're checking every locker room, they're checking every place in our building to make sure there isn't anybody. Even though we think there's not, they're doing that cuz they're, they're trained to do it. Once that ends, like, once, once they realize that they've checked every nick and crink, and they're checking those hallways off as they go. And they're doing that in a coordinated way, and we're hearing that in incident, incident command. So once all of those areas are clear, then they go around and start opening doors. But still, as part of their training, when they open those doors, they make sure that there's nobody in there. Because they were called for a lockdown, okay? Um, so. So go, going back to like our systems, we have, um, three ways, you know, to, to get into lockdown. Fifteen years ago, we didn't have any. Right? Um, and although one of those ways sent us into a lockdown when we weren't supposed to. We, we've adjusted that, I, I did mention that in the video that I put out last night, that's been fixed, okay? Or adjusted to hopefully make it a lot rare, more rare that it'll happen, and wha- wha- what I, uh, I, I talked about, uh, the, the, the response and said, uh, our nu- newest notification method is where the error actually occurred. Uh, that is being corrected so as to reduce the risk of any false lockdown in the future, okay? Um, that's already been corrected, that was corrected today. And we had to come in and, and do a reprogramming of our system. Um. Understand that we're always wrestling with, and I don't make these decisions during the lottery, but again, at the end of the day, it's my fault, right? When we make these decisions, it's with the idea, how fast can we put a place into lockdown? So that if it does really happen, everybody gets to get behind a closed door so that they can get safe. Because we are very lucky, we do have school resource officers, school security officers in our district, and a lot of places still don't. We have people that can be there right away to address that situation, what, and if it happens, right? Um. A couple of other things that, that I wanted to just reiterate cuz I, I had mentioned them in, in, in that video, but, um. I, I, law enforcement's been mentioned a few times, people wouldn't know, but our, all of our emergency services. Um, the head of our emergency services in Niagara County was here, standing right in there, right? Right in the incident command. Our, um, fire, Rob Hoover and the fire, they're, they're there, if, if we didn't need them, and we're really happy we didn't need them. But they were there, they were there, just like we've trained for them to be there, waiting if they needed to go in. And the teams were ready to take them in if we need to take them in. Again, we never wanna be there, but they were, they were certainly ready. Um, and I, and I thank them all the time, but, you know, I'm gonna thank them again. Um. Our families were incredible. We sent messages, I went out to the curb where some were standing after they got the message that said that we were in a good place, right? Like, and they were still checking things, but that were, you know, when, when, when that, that was a third or fourth one that went out. Um. I was able to speak with them there, um. Even though they were obviously concerned, shaken, they, I said, you were just gonna need to be patient if you wanna reunify with your child. Some said, no, I'm good, go on, others stayed, they took their kids home, um, some mentioned late arrivals, some did, were bringing their kids back, or their parents said, yep, go back when they got that message. So we had some kids going in, and we had some kids who were coming out with their parents, right? Um, and as we know, all people are different, you know, when it comes to trauma, trauma and how they, how they react to it. Some said, hey, everything's safe, we're, we're, we're going in. The, um. The lockdown system I mentioned, I, I do want to talk a little bit about, we do have an internal communication system, it's called Raptor. Raptor is something that if we go into any of these events, we're able to communicate in-house, okay? So within the district, all the staff are able to communicate in that, in that thread. That system had nothing to do with this event. It was used during the event at the high school for people to communicate, could have been used in both buildings. We've, we, we have some concerns a little bit with that system, not related to Monday. So we're, we're, we still have it, it's still great. Again, it's an internal communication system. But we've put a pause on that, where only administrators are going to have access for a little bit. Until we can either work out the kinks, or maybe we decide that that's how it's going to work. Now, whenever I say that, all of our staff, if an event is initiated, will still be in the communication loop, okay? So that's just another layer, you know, I, I talk about that a lot. We have layers to our system, it's not just one, there's many. There's many layers to our, to our, to our safety protocol and safety system. One of the other ones, because someone asked, and I've mentioned it before at a meeting, so I'll mention it now. We have something called Zero Eyes. It's an incredible technology. Zero Eyes is actually able to pick up of any brandished weapon. And we get notified, our SROs, our SSOs, all of our administrators. The first law enforcement person who had their weapon out, I got a call from Zero Eyes. Okay, the system works. Again, we, we, of course, did testing before, before now, but in a real situation. Our cameras picked up the brandished weapons. And I think we're. Maybe one of a handful of schools in, in, in Western New York will have that technology now at our fingertips and, and we're using it. So that's certainly. Important for us and, you know, it's, it's a, it's an investment. We've made a lot of investments in, in, in safety. So. I will, I will look a little bit into later arrival piece, because I have some. Some questions about that, right, a little bit. I, I had one, I had one caller question that had to do with like a particular location. If that was the right location for somebody to go. Because you're here and you came, and I appreciate that. The area that I think you're talking about, right? And, and this would be a general, a general statement too. The idea in certain areas of our building, without giving, without me going into detail of where those places are, right? There are some places that your students would be very accessible, because they can be seen very easily if they're in those locations. So there's other locations that are off of those locations where we need them to. So that do lock behind closed doors. And this is the least. This is the piece that I like to talk about the least, but if we ever ended up in this as a real situation, everybody knows that it's all about time, right? We have all of these things in place to minimize, right, to minimize casualties. And so. As long as, and I'll look into that, because I'll talk to you tomorrow. As long as it was the, a place that maybe I'm thinking it is, and it's behind a locked door, that, that's being met. We want them in places where they can be safe and behind closed doors, because that's biding us time. That's making sure that our SROs and SSOs who are all armed are getting to that situation and neutralizing it. So that none of our other people are impacted. Okay? So I know, Renee, you got the number, we have the number here, or the name here, so I'll give you a call. Is, is, is your, if you're, if you're not in the district, I'll need a phone number from you. Okay, okay. So if you're, and if you're in the dis, why don't you, afterwards, would you see us? That would be great. Yep, absolutely. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. So, so one of the things that was mentioned was counseling, I know that that day, the day of the event in our classrooms. Class did not go on as usual. They were, our, our staff were debriefing with kids the rest of that day. And offered, if you needed to talk to somebody, if you needed to, like, all of that was happening. And anybody who needed any of that, you know, additional help, it was, it was, it was offered. I know not everybody feels comfortable doing that. Good news today, more people than ever feel comfortable doing that. And our staff are more trained than ever to do that. So, you know, we, we have, well, in our district, we have fifty. Fifty-something TIG trained, does that sound right? Forty-four, okay, I was off by a little. Forty-four people who are TIG trained, we have them in high school, we have them in the middle school. So any issues with trauma, and we have counselors and we have social workers, right? And let's face it, our, all of our staff were, were impacted by this, right? So I, I don't think that ends, I think, you know, you're going to hear some people who, two days later, three days later, a week later, are going to say. Still bother me, I need to talk to somebody. And if kids are talking to their parents, get a hold of the school counselor and let them know, right? Because they're, that's what they're there for. Thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you. So. Two unrelated items. One is the Eco Campus Project. So on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, we have our Eco Campus Event from eight to eleven, I know. Getting us drawn up some, some interest at high school. This is the eleventh time we've done this event, the eleventh time, which is pretty incredible that, that it keeps growing. I want to share some more general, really good news with that. The Greenway Commission and the Ecological Standing Committee. Approved a project that we're working with, with Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper. Over here by Cave of the Creek, that's going to be like a three, two and a half, three-year project. We will be submitting for the other portion of that project, which is actually the, you've heard me talk about it here, I'm sure. The boardwalk, the bridge over the creek, and the step downs for kids to use for their science classrooms, which we're so excited about. It, it's not going to happen fast enough for us, but you know, there's design, there's working to appropriately all the environmental stuff. But we're, we're pretty excited, we'll be submitting for our portion of that, but those two things will be working in concert. One more thing about the Greenway. Funding through the host communities that we're going to be submitting for, Allison's doing a lot of that work. We're also attaching that, not just the stuff over here by the creek, but playgrounds at all of the elementary schools. Because they're, they're, as far as I'm concerned, at their end of useful life. And. The homecoming football game, I got a call today about four o'clock, three thirty, four o'clock, that that game has been moved out. So anybody out there who already has it on their calendar, it's on for seven o'clock, it's going to be six o'clock. And it's six o'clock on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, that sound right? Is that Thursday? So six PM on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you for your report. I went through no old business, no new business, opened up to public comments, anyone else would like to speak? Okay, any board member with comments? Right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Seconded, all in favor, aye, opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.